Okay, I am gonna take my mask off just so that everybody can hear me. I'd like to welcome everybody. I'm Superintendent Michael Bearman. And it's a pleasure to welcome our community, our school community, to our town hall meeting. Certainly, if we were in other circumstances, it'd be the preference to do this face to face. And we really tried to make it work possibly at the stadium or Shea Ground. But considering there was a presentation to show, it would be very difficult to do. So we settled on doing it virtually. And I appreciate your patience as we work through this. I'm sure that there might be some hiccups along the way. At any rate, I'm going to start off by sharing my screen because I do have a brief. I do have a brief presentation. Let me see if I can get my microphone working okay. Someone said that I'm a little quiet. Chris Ceruto. Chris, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, I can.
Okay, do I sound loud enough?
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and share my screen. And I have a brief presentation that I'd like to share with you then at the conclusion of it. And certainly during the presentation, if you have questions, please type them into the chat. And Mr. Ceruto will keep track of those questions. And following our presentation, we'll have a question and answer session. So I'd like to give a brief update of, first of all, the school reopening roadmap that was released a few weeks ago, as well as the accompanying executive order. And then where we stand today. We're gonna ask everyone to please unmute themselves.
What's this? Did you bring your own butter?
Newcomb.
Okay, I apologize. The setting should be configured that everybody is muted. All right, sorry about that, folks. As we work through the glitches. So our goal is to return to face to face instruction five days per week in as normal a fashion as possible while keeping all Harbor Springs Public Schools students safe, their families and the staff as well. That is our goal. On June 30th, Governor Whitmer issued Executive Order 202142 in accompanying Return to Michigan Safe Schools, Michigan's 2020-21 Return to School Roadmap, which outlined the steps school districts must follow in order to start the 2021 school year. That was accompanied by an executive order that every district must develop and adopt a COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan that was informed by the Michigan Return to School Roadmap. The plan must describe the policies and procedures that the district will follow for the phase in the region that the district is located and be approved by the Board of Education by August 15th and filed with the local intermediate school district by August 17th. So many of you know this, that Michigan is divided into eight different economic regions. These are part of the Michigan Safe Start Economic Development. And we are, our particular region, Region 6, we are in what is called Phase 5, us and the Upper Peninsula. So the state of Michigan phases, the state of Michigan phases are a little bit different from what's called the Michigan Safe Start Map. And only an executive order can change which phase that we are in. So it's a little confusing because if you go on the Michigan Department of Human Services website, you'll see that there's risk levels identified by number as well. We are in Traverse City Zone, which very similar to the economic phases. But we're in Risk Phase 4. So it's a little confusing. We're not in Phase 5 of the economic region that guides school openings. But there's another indicator that's used called the risk level. And we're actually, our region is the lowest risk level now in the entire state. This map, I think, was updated July 23rd. So we're in this medium risk category. Other regions, you can see some are in high risk. The Upper Peninsula is in a little bit more of a risk situation than we are. So what does this mean for reopening schools in accordance with the roadmap? Phases 1 through 3 are, the governor's counsel in the roadmap has indicated that phases 1 through 3, school will be closed, will be 100% remote. In Phase 4, there are many requirements. And in Phase 5, those many requirements, most of them become strong recommendations. So districts must develop plans for each scenario, Phases 1 through 3, Phase 4 and Phase 5, and submit them for approval by the Board of Education by August 15th. To help work through this road plan, we've taken a pretty collaborative approach. Myself, our chief financial officers, chief financial officer, principals from each of the building, department directors from transportation, technology and food service, teachers from each level and each building, school counselors, board members, a custodian representative, parents from the elementary, middle and high school level and health professionals are all part of that task force of 25 members. Together, we are very carefully deciphering the 63 pages in the school Return to School Roadmap. That roadmap is broken into sections for Phases 1 through 3, Phase 4 and Phase 5. It's extremely detailed. Many of the bulleted points are either required, strongly recommended or recommended. And it's broken down into four categories: Safety Protocols, Mental and Social Emotional Health, Instruction and Operations. Within each category, those are broken down a little further. And you can see here the categories that are covered in the safety protocols. Personal protective equipment would include things like masks, face shields, plexiglass, gloves, etc. In addition to hygiene, spacing and movement, you can see some of the other areas. It gets into safety protocols, get into athletics, proper cleaning protocols, transportation, etc. The Mental and Social Emotional Health focuses on mental health screening, professional development for staff, a crisis management plan, how we communicate in case of a crisis, especially if we're in a school closure or we need to close the school, and de-stigmatization of COVID-19 in case we do have positive cases. So we know even returning to school in September, under normal circumstances, if we were to return, we know that some of our students haven't been in school since middle of March, beginning of mid-March. And that in and of itself might make some students feel uncomfortable, out of place, a little strange, a little bit off. So that's under the best circumstances. Another category in the school roadmap plan, and very important obviously, is instruction. It covers governance, anywhere from surveying stakeholders to gathering feedback. What instruction will look like if it's in person? Or if a district goes to a hybrid model, or it's remote instruction? What types of communication and family supports do we have put in place? And also professional development. Operations includes how we manage our facilities during this crisis, anywhere from budget, food service, enrollment and staffing, technology and transportation. And the thing about all of these four categories, as you can see, there's a lot of crossover. Now, our task force is broken down into subcommittees that are each working in these separate categories. So the requirements of Phase 1 through 3 actually are that, are pretty straightforward. It requires the closure of school buildings to anyone except for specific employees or contractors, as well as licensed childcare employees and families that they serve. We, districts in those phases, would have to offer alternative modes of instruction other than in-person instruction. Athletics would be suspended along with after-school activities and transportation. We would need to provide for food distribution to eligible students and continue to pay for school employees and redeploying staff if necessary. This is very similar to the closure that we experienced as of March 13th this past year. There is one exception. Under the roadmap, licensed childcare would continue to operate. So I wanted to kind of do what I thought would be helpful in the roadmap to summarize some of the requirements and strong recommendations and recommendations. We all know what Phase 1 through 3 is. That's a closure of school. But Phase 4 and 5 is where there's a little bit of differentiation. And what I'd like to do is pull some relevant areas out of the school reopening roadmap and share them with you. My intent is not to read everything. Again, we'll put this on the website along with the actual PowerPoint presentation for you to peruse on your own. But you can see the difference between Phase 4 and Phase 5 comes with required and strongly recommended or recommended. That's one of the biggest differences. Again, right now, our economic region is Phase 5. And that's what governs our school reopening status as of now, as of today. So face masks. I would be lying or not being very transparent if I didn't say that's probably one of the elephants in the room for some people. And I think that, you know, we just need to throw it out there that in Phase 4, these are mostly requirements. Again, in Phase 5, they become strongly recommended, such as students and staff on school buses, whether students are in hallways or common areas for staff. You can see students in grades 6 through 12 in the classrooms. Phase 4 calls them a requirement. Phase 5 suggests strongly recommended. However, students in grades K through 5 in classrooms, Phase 4 would be strongly recommended. Phase 5 is recommended. Spacing and movement. So strongly recommended that desks are spaced six feet apart in classrooms for Phase 4. Phase 5, that becomes a recommendation. Facing desks in the same direction, you can see, again, some of the differences, strongly recommended and recommended. Specials in the classroom, recommended in both. Physical education held outside when possible, recommended in both. Some restrictions on visitors coming into the school. Family members or guests, strongly recommended in Phase 4, recommended in Phase 5. Screening for adults, strongly recommended in Phase 4, recommended in Phase 5. Gathering and food services. Public indoor assemblies that bring together students from more than one classroom. They're prohibited, required in Phase 4, recommended in Phase 5 to prohibit those activities. And then you can see some things related to cafeteria. Classrooms or outdoor eating areas used for students to eat meals outside or in classrooms, if distancing guidelines can't be met, that's recommended in both. The staggering of mealtimes. Gets into a little bit of hand washing for food services. And then extracurricular activities, field trips. Off-site field trips that require bus transportation to an indoor location are suspended. That's recommended in Phase 4. It's, Phase 5 says, it doesn't say recommended or strongly recommended. It says strongly recommended to use face masks. So there's some quirks that that we are figuring out as we really delve into the plan, into the roadmap. So in regard to screening staff and students, the guidance there is to cooperate with the local health department regarding screening protocols. That's required. In Phase 5, that was inadvertently left out. However, Lisa Peacock, who is the health officer for the Health Department of Northwest Michigan, served on the council that wrote these and said that it's really required in Phase 5 too. Designating a quarantine area to care for students who become ill. Symptomatic students sent home and kept home until they test negative or completely recovered according to CBC guidelines. Families encouraged to check child's temperature every morning. Some of these are the same, most of them are the same for 4 and 5. And then staff, again, conducting daily self-examinations, including a temperature check prior to coming to work. We have these things already in place for our staff. And we actually have the summer for athletics, for summer school. We have, we actually do conduct screening for students. So this is something that the task force is working through. Are we actually gonna screen students every day, take their temperatures? Are parents gonna be required to sign off every day that their students are not feeling ill or exhibiting symptoms? That's something that our task force is working through right now. In regard to testing, again, cooperating with local health departments required. Students and staff who become ill at school should be tested. That's a strong recommendation of both phases. Families should be notified of positive tests. That means if we do have a positive test here, whether it's a student or a staff member, our parent community is notified. Obviously, names aren't released so that we aren't violating HIPAA or FERPA guidelines. And then contact trace, close contacts within six feet for 15 minutes. That's the health department's guideline to quarantine for 14 days. Athletics, our athletic director already has implemented these measures that we're following. You can see those, again, there's some things that aren't specifically mentioned in Phase 5. There are limits on stadium and indoor events that are strongly recommended, as you can see in Phase 5. Busing and transportation, hand sanitizer on the bus. You can see, we've kind of talked about this before, facial coverings. Again, a lot of them are required and strongly recommended. And as far as cleaning goes, a lot of required and strongly recommended. From student desks wipe down after each class period to athletic equipment cleaned before and after each session. Frequently touched surfaces, as you can see. So now I'd like to talk about some instructional options. Our intent is to open face-to-face instruction in person five days a week. Some schools are looking at possibly an A-B schedule, bringing maybe half the kids in on odd calendar days, the other half during even calendar days in order to have less students in the building at a time. Because our area is relatively low risk, I say relatively, medium risk to low risk community spread, and because we have relatively small class sizes to begin with, we think that we can pull off face-to-face instruction five days a week. And I say that in full transparency, that school will have to look different to make that happen. But we think that the community wants to send their kids to school five days a week. And if we could do it in compliance with the roadmap and health department guidelines and make it safe, then that's something that we should really target. Now, a lot of things can change between now and September 1st. So we need to be prepared for any scenario. We would also offer a 100% online program to students K through 12 for an entire semester or for the entire year. So what would in-person face-to-face look like? The instructional part of it, the plan would be to start face-to-face five days a week. Again, that's the target that we will be shooting for, K through 12. The district is working with a third-party vendor for a platform, what we call a learning management system, or LMS, and a full online curriculum to have available in case of school closures or quarantine. In other words, we could be a month into things, and if there's a spike and we go back to Phase 1 through 3, or our area has an exceptional spike and the health department asks us to close, or if one of our schools has to close, etc., we will have a backup ready to go that our kids will have had exposure to at the beginning of the year, even face-to-face. Teachers will work with them on it and that our staff is fully prepared. We know that while what happened in March, March 13th onward, our staff did an incredible job and our parents did an incredible job. The kids were great. But Google Classroom and a weekly schedule of every other day without much structure isn't gonna make it. And we are in a position that even if we start off face-to-face and close, we're gonna have to account every day for attendance for a full day of learning. So we've gotta beef up our learning platform, our professional development for our teachers and our online ability to teach, if that's necessary. So all staff would receive professional development and online learning platform and the curriculum. And we would probably, again, face-to-face instruction will also include some online learning in the platform and curriculum so students are familiar, especially at the beginning of the year, so that we can switch quickly between online, between face-to-face and remote. So the online option for the semester or for a whole year would be offered, again, to all K through 12 Harbor Springs students. It would be provided by Harbor Springs but with an online platform or learning management system and curriculum through a third-party vendor. It would be a robust curriculum that aligns with the Michigan standards and benchmarks. Daily attendance would be required, probably, you know, four to five hours a day. Assignments, projects and assessments would be graded. It would be much different than what students had in the spring of 2020. A Harbor Springs teacher may or may not be the teacher of record. Whatever system we have for our online students, there will be a teacher attached to it. It just won't be, here, go do this independently. There will be a teacher assigned to the student for each course or for an entire student's schedule. It may be a Harbor Springs teacher or it may not be. It may be another teacher in Michigan. We would ask parents to make a commitment for at least an entire semester. And so that we don't have a bunch of students switching from an online platform to face-to-face, then back to online again. Students that are fully online for a semester, we would ask to make that commitment because they will be at a different pace than those students learning face-to-face. They may even have a different curriculum. The same standards and benchmarks will be covered but through a different curriculum possibly. So right now, we are in our final stages of planning. We continue weekly consultation with the Health Department of Northwest Michigan and area districts. Our task force will be finalizing the plan to be improved by the Board of Education. Our board approval may actually occur over two meetings. We are most likely gonna schedule a special meeting for April 4th for the board to hear some of the plan. And then also is on August 10th to hear the rest of the plan. Some parts of the plan might get approved as early as April 4th with the rest of it August 10th, or it might all get approved August 10th. We feel that we need a plan to be approved as soon as possible so that parents can make some informed decisions about what they want to do as far as sending their students to school to start with us face-to-face or choosing a fully online option. or choosing a fully online option. I will tell you that, and I don't, I go, I'm going out on a limb in saying this. So I guess I'm putting myself out there by saying this, that our task force is considering Phase Five, the strong recommendations and recommendations more as requirements, if they are feasible, if that indeed is the phase that we open in. And I think part of the rationale is, number one, we want to, we would rather err on the side of safety. And number two, if we're in a position where we're going between Phase Four and Phase Five a couple times during the year, if our status changes, that's hard for students. "Oh, we're in Phase Five this week, but next week we're going to go in Phase Four, so we're going to implement a whole new set of protocols to follow." We think that that's confusing. And so that's my gut feeling. I don't know that for sure, because this still needs to be vetted out by our task force committee and get approved by the board. But again, we understand that parents need to know this information to make informed decisions. And, you know, again, the elephant in the room regarding masks, you know, there's, like anything else, if you want something to support your position, you'll probably find a study. But I think that, you know, many of us have seen charts like this. And what I like about this is there's no percentages applied to this, because I don't think we really know that. But we know if everybody's wearing a mask, everybody's probably safer than if some, no one's wearing a mask, or some people are wearing a mask and some aren't. And we know that there's been, we've heard about studies with children under 10 not being able to transmit. You know, I don't know how well those studies are vetted or if they're peer-reviewed or whatever. But we know that, again, erring on the side of safety might, you know, might be wise in something like this, especially with a virus that we know still relatively little about. So some factors to consider when the plan does get approved and you have that information, whether to send your student to school or opt for a fully online option. Certainly, your child's current health and risk factors related to COVID, your child's learning style, your family's current health or risk factors related to COVID, your personal and family feelings regarding restrictions and requirements that we're going to put in place for being face-to-face. Your child's ability to be self-paced, and obviously, the dynamics within your household. Having a kindergarten first grader, second grader, fully online, as you know, even with a robust learning management system, with a teacher helping to manage that from a distance is still very, I think, parent facilitated would be an understatement. Older children, maybe not so much. So steps we've already taken, we've been consulting weekly with the Health Department of Northwest Michigan, Lisa Peacock, Susan Velosky, Dr. Meyerson. We did a survey of parents and staff early on in the summer, but we realized things have changed since then. We've been securing PPE, masks, plexiglass shields, et cetera. We have purchased state-of-the-art sanitizing equipment for students and buses. We have installing hand sanitizer dispensers in all locations, touchless paper towel dispensers in all large bathrooms and locker rooms. We're increasing our daytime cleaning personnel. As you know, we've investigated, or maybe I didn't make that clear, but we're looking at a few online curriculum and LMS platforms. And our school reopening task force has met multiple times. The work that still remains, continued consultation with the Health Department, finalizing the plan and board of that approval, hopefully, over April 6th and April 10th dates. Communicating that plan to Harbor Springs Public School students, staff, and parents. Surveying parents and staff again regarding their intent to return to school. And then opening a registration window for the 100% online option. What can parents do to help? I think, you know, being positive with your child. Again, that social-emotional piece is huge. It's July 27th, you know, we have the month of August, and, you know, school will be here. And, you know, for many students, that's anxiety ridden to begin with. So being positive with your child and talking about school and what it could look like. Practicing wearing masks and finding one or two or three that are comfortable probably is a good idea if you do intend to send your child. And discussing the options as a family for what type of learning will be best. Again, I know you can't make these decisions now, maybe some of you can, but as soon as more information comes out. And then keep in touch with us. You know, check the website often. We do have a school reopening page that we started. Like Harbor Springs Public Schools on Facebook, I use that a lot to communicate. Don't hesitate to email me or phone me with any questions or concerns of one of our principals or staff. So I would like to. Chris is joining me, and we're going to address some of the questions.
Okay, I can see them on the site, as you can see. I'll just try to take them in order from top going down. One question came up that I forwarded to Tina. Will parents be able to enroll their children if they choose to stay here in their vacation home from other states if they are considering the rest of the city?
The question was, if a family is not a, if this is a family's second home and they typically don't reside in Harbor Springs year-round, can I enroll my student? Yes, you can. You're a property owner here with your child. We always use the principle of where your child lays his head every night is where you should send your child to school. So the answer is yes. You may visit Tina Haas at Harbor Springs High School Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 3:30, and she will be glad to enroll you. If there's any questions, send me an email or give me a call.
Okay, Leah has a question. If there is a positive case found in school, how would you handle it? Is there a plan for that? And so then, with the whole class quarantined, with the teacher quarantined, what about siblings?
So the question was, if there is a positive case identified here at school, what would happen? Would the whole school quarantine? Would the class quarantine, including the teacher? And that we would take under advisement from the Health Department. What the Health Department does is contact trace those people that a student would have been in contact with, close contact for 15 minutes or more, six feet apart or less. Now, one of the things that the Health Department did tell us is if they were quite confident that students in the classroom were all wearing masks the entire time, and especially in elementary school where students are in cohorts, then the whole class would not necessarily have to quarantine. Again, that, I don't want to write that down and etch it in cement, but that is what the conversation with the Health Department has been like. But they would advise us.
A question from Julie. What is the high school doing regarding vocational education?
The question is, what about vocational education? And it's a really good question. We would default to what the, the particular site that they're going to, if it's Petaskey or Pelston. I don't know if we send, I don't think we send too many kids to Boeing City. Typically, it's Petaskey or Pelston. The protocols that we have in place are pretty, going to be pretty similar as those around the ISD. I'm in weekly meetings with the other superintendents as well from Charham ISD. So I think I'm pretty confident that they'll be following very similar protocols if and when they go to the EvoCad classes out of district.
Julie is asking, in the slide that we have, we have strong recommendation or strongly recommended and recommended, right? You know, we have a couple of those. She's wondering how the school district translates the levels of recommendations.
So the question is, how do we translate when it's a requirement, a strong recommendation, and a recommendation? How do we translate that into what we're actually going to do? One of the things that we have to put in our plan is we have to make a rationale for every strong recommendation that we don't follow, we have to give a rationale as to why. And, you know, I think that these recommendations and requirements, it took a while for the Advisory Council to get these out. It was a lot, there were a lot of stakeholders on this committee, health professionals, school personnel, parents. You know, and we, we feel that if some, I think for the most part, our task force feels is this group of people that really gave us a lot of thought called something a strong recommendation or a recommendation. If it's totally not feasible and we just can't pull it off. For example, there are going to be some classrooms where, no matter what we do, we're not going to be able to ensure a six-foot distance or get the desks all facing the same way. It's just impossible to. We might not be able to pull that off. But there are some things that are strong recommendations or recommendations that we can pull off and do. Are they going to be easy? Are there going to be logistics? Are people going to be upset? Is it going to look the same? Probably not.
One thing that came up, just as in general, and I know this to be true. I think we have a title on the slide that said April, I think it was in August on all of those. So that's just a technical piece. But the other one that came up was the, when do we need to make the decision about the online versus the on-ground choices?
So Chris pointed out that there was a couple of slides that said April. And I call that a bearman blunder, so I apologize. Sorry about that. What would be the timeline of a parent making that decision? What would our window of registration be? You know, I, we would, we would want to make a decision relatively quickly because that's going to impact how we deploy our staff. For example, if we have a large number of students at elementary that are going to be taught online, we may want to have one of our staff do that, take those students for the entire semester or year. We might want to have one of our staff do that. And same thing at the high school. If enough students would warrant assigning our staff to teach that. So it becomes a staffing issue, because then I'd have to hire staff to replace those staff. So there is some urgency, but we realize that parents need time, too. So our hope is that shortly after April 10th. I don't know why I have April on my mind. August 10th, shortly after that date, August 10th, we would open a window up, keep it open for at least a week or week and a half or so for parents to make that decision. Hopefully, we would be able to get some information out even sooner than that.
Along those lines, with the August 10th window, would there be opportunity for the parents to review the online option as we settle on a provider or plan for that?
Chris asked, one of the questions in the chat was, would it be possible for parents to review the online option once we know who the provider is in the platform? I would like to say yes, that we would see if we can get demos out there or direct the parents to the website to see the course catalogs and see some demo lessons. I think that would be a nice thing as a parent. I would like that, so I would hope that we could provide that.
There's a couple of questions on if we provide if the students participate in online learning. How does that impact participation in sports?
The question is, if a student is participating in online learning, how does that affect participation in sports? That student can fully participate in sports or the extracurriculars that we have available, providing they are available. That student would still be a Harbor Springs Public School student. And in credit here at Harbor Springs, that's the learning delivery model that that student would use. But that student could still participate in after-school sports and activities, again, providing that those are all occurring.
Okay. Along the lines of the positive testing, I guess one of the questions would be, is there, what kind of, I guess the timer, the question comes up is, will parents be notified immediately if there's a suspected confirmed case within their child's school or class?
The question is, would, if we did have a positive case here at school, would parents be notified quickly, immediately? It would always be my intent to get out quick information as soon as it's available. I, you know, do, we do our best to do that. And I would say, in this case, yes, we'd want parents to know. You know, we know the whole issue of testing is one that unfortunately takes time. And, you know, we're hopeful, just like everybody else, that they could get the time that it takes to get the results back trimmed down a little bit. But as soon as we find out and are communicated that through the Health Department, then we would let our parents know.
How easily will students be able to transfer to online learning if they're uncomfortable in the classroom?
The question is, how, how will a student, how easily or how will a student make the transition from in-person instruction, if they're uncomfortable with that, to online? And I really, that's one that I can't answer. You know, every student's different. Parents, you know your students the best. Some of our students in March, when we closed down, actually thrive in this type of learning environment. I can't, I can tell you that it probably won't be like that, because I think it's going to be a a lot more regimented and demanding via fully online option. But every student's different and. Has a different learning style.
I'm kind of scanning through to see if there's any reviews on here. Sorry about that. Well, I guess what kind of response have you received from non-residents vacationer owners who have requested into the Lord, the Children's District? And along those lines, I guess it's similar to the testing question, right? How do how do we maintain do we still maintain small class sizes with with that? And some sort of tracing with that?
So the question is what has the response been from? Seasonal families. That have decided to make this year, maybe this year, maybe for good. Harbor Springs, their home. Where their students would go to school here for the year. You know, I talked to a couple of people. We need to remember that we. Put a total halt on schools of choice this year. We are not accepting one new school of choice student unless there's an older sibling already here under schools of choice. That means students from outside of the district. So. We did that to keep class sizes small. My hunch is that there will be. A percentage of parents that don't wanna send their students to school face to face, at least for the first semester and maybe for the whole year. So in the end, I would think that things balance each other out a little bit and. You know, we're we're gonna welcome any student here that has a residence here. That's. Again, laying their head down on the pillow in the school district of Harbor Springs with open arms and do our. Best to keep every child safe and my staff safe as well.
A question on. Will Blackford students be able to leave the classroom for specials, library and cafeteria?
Chris asked, one of the questions in the chat was specific to Blackford, which houses pre K through one. Along with childcare, the question was will students? In Blackford be allowed to leave the classroom to go to library, to go to specials? You know. Again, we're we're trying to figure that out. I don't wanna tell you yes, and then all of a sudden it's no. I hope that, you know, obviously, we need to make that decision. I think when again, when students are wearing masks. It gives you a little bit more. Flexibility of movement to some degree. We still need to worry about distancing. But if we can get like the art room sanitized in between classes coming. Or the music room. You know, Jim will be outside to the greatest extent possible. We're encouraging our teachers to take their kids out. You know, learning might look a little bit different. It might not be if. The academics might not come at such a fast pace because we've gotta do some things different. And I. Throw that out there between hand washing and, you know, trying to get the kids outside on a regular basis and, you know. But. I don't have an answer. The bottom line is I don't have an answer. I think a lot of it depends if we're wearing masks or not wearing masks and the degree that we think we can get those rooms cleaned in between classes coming in. Kids are still traveling in cohorts. So that's good. You know, it's not like we mix the kids up, then send them. So they're still with their kind of family unit. Going to the art room. We might have supplies. Kids might have to be using their own supplies and art. Or we might have disposable supplies or, you know, for each kid or staff or class.
The question was, I think it's more clarification. So the question is how will transitioning work from in person learning to online learning? If a student has to be quarantined? Or if you transition from phase four to phase three? If we're using an online system that has a different curriculum than what we do in person?
So so all these questions are excellent, first of all. And the question was asked, how would we transition from being face to face to online? The question cited a couple of scenarios. If we went from phase four to phase three, so that means the entire class. Or let's say a student was quarantined at home for a couple of weeks. Well. What our plan is is we would get kids used to the learning platform while they are here. And maybe do a couple of lessons a week out of the online curriculum. And the nice thing about both of the curriculums that we're. The the three curriculums actually that we're looking at. Is that teachers can load their own. Curriculum materials into those platforms. They're pretty flexible. So as the year goes on. And our staff gets more familiar with. Whatever system we go with. Quite possibly, we can load more and more stuff on. We we're learning that some of our online programs right now, like TCI Social Studies at the middle school can be easily loaded on the the learning platforms we're looking at. So those are all positive things. And if a student, let's say, was home for two weeks. That teacher would assign the student out of that online or online. Module and platform and work with that student and maybe zoom a little bit with that student. Possible, maybe zoom with the whole classroom. But that student could be completing assignments daily in that learning platform because that student will have been used to it. And the teacher would do the appropriate assignments that match the current unit that they're in.
We've got more questions that are coming in right here. Tell them I don't know how long you wanted to. You wanted to answer one more than we're trying to.
No, we can we can go. Let's take a few more questions.
Sprolling my way through, like I said, there's some there's some in heart and a lot right here. Why do we need a third party for the online curriculum? I think you answered this again already, but maybe we're.
Well, the question is why do you need a third party? Runner. First of all, there are some schools. I I came from prior to coming to Harbor Springs. I was down in Rochester. It's a fifteen thousand student district with nine hundred and fifty teaching staff. They have spent a better part of the summer writing their own virtual. School curriculum that their teachers are gonna teach. They they have a scale in which they can do that. We don't and it's I don't expect our teachers. To. Come up with a curriculum, load it all into a platform, be ready to go the first day of school, teach it, not only teach those students that they have face to face, but then to teach the kids that are fully online. I think that's a lot to ask their teacher. For anybody to do. And we want those staff that are teaching face to face that they will fully concentrate on those kids in front of them. Keep them safe. Keep themselves safe. Not also when they're done with that, then teach a student that's fully online for the entire semester. So that's why, you know, we would go as a third party contractor. Now, if we had a scale. If the number suggested that, yeah, you know, we could actually go out and hire a Harbor Springs teacher to teach those students or have one of our teachers teach those students and hire staff members. For that teacher, then, you know, that's a different story. A lot of it just depends on the numbers.
I'm gonna give you a series of questions that are all revolving on masks. Enforcing. Enforcing mask wearing. What about five oh fours or medical exemptions for masks? And will Blackford students be in a mask full time?
So the question is what about mask enforcement? If indeed, students are wearing masks. For a majority of the day or all the time inside or whatever this task force lands on. What about those students on five oh fours or have a medical condition? And will Blackford students be wearing masks? So. You know, we're not gonna call the law enforcement and that students aren't wearing masks and we're not. We're we're gonna. We want people to be safe. So, you know, our teachers are kind. They're they know how to approach children. You know, I think there'll there'll be a lot of gentle reminders. You know, and if a student, let's say, just became so noncompliant. And, you know. Defiant and argumentative and was really giving the teacher a difficult time, then we would probably call the student's parent like we would normally do in a situation like that. Regarding students that are on five oh fours or. Either medically fragile or whatever. We will follow what the five oh four plan and doctors sell. You know, so if a physician says that the student shouldn't wear a mask, maybe the student. Wear a shield or whatever. We would comply with those five oh four plans in medical and and ask where physicians know. In regard to Blackford students, I don't know that yet. If, you know. That's something that we have to decide. I think we need to, again, look at. You know, how restrictive do we wanna be with other things? And can we put students in a Blackford classroom? Six feet apart and keep them there, all right? We for our Blackford Childcare Center, the children aren't in masks. And they are, you know, babies through five, four and five. Childcare operates under a different set of rules. But we're not gonna put infants or toddlers in masks. Our Harvard's kids though, wear them. So. That's something that. We're gonna be deciding, but I have to make sure also my staff is safe. I can't say this enough. Nationally, one out of every four teachers is in a high risk category for COVID. I don't know what our numbers are, but I do know this. If our staff gets sick, then we're out of luck. You know, that's we wanna do our best to keep schools open five days a week, face to face. So we might have to put some things in place that no one likes. Well, I don't like sitting here. In a hot, stuffy room with Chris right across the desk from me. Air went off at five. You know, and I know a youngster isn't gonna like it either in a hot classroom. Like, you know, that's why we wanna be able to get the kids outside as much as we can, give them, you know, whatever breaks we can from, you know, wearing a mask.
There's a few more questions here. I think they're pretty specific and I think that that's some of the stuff we're working through in task force. But I do wanna, at the end here, we've got a couple of quote ones from Charlie. Says, Mr. Bearman, thank you for hosting, explaining and having the courage to do those questions at this time. And from Molly says, we appreciate it. So thank you very much today for trying to do this and we'll keep working on the rest of them as as we move forward.
Well. I wish I had more answers for you, the definitive answers right now. Maybe we'll come back in a couple of weeks and do another town hall. And be able to answer things more definitively. And I can get the date right and not put April in there. But I love this community. Your kids mean everything in the world to me and our staff. And. We're trying to do our best. We're not gonna make. No matter what we do, we're not gonna make a lot of people happy. We know that. So one of the things that. I I've really heard about. Go ahead and Google Dr. Michael Michael Osterholm. Out of the University of Minnesota, the Center for Infectious Disease Research and Policy. He does a lot of stuff on this topic and puts out a weekly podcast. It's just really interesting. Some of the stuff I, you know, don't agree with, some of it I do. But one of the things that he noted is flexibility, flexibility, flexibility. And we're all gonna have to be flexible with this. So anyways. I appreciate you all for joining in. And I'm gonna sign off. And you know where to find me. So everyone, take care and thank you.
Thank you.